Now, we will convene our September 30th study session. First item on our agenda is to review the items on our October 4th agenda. So please refer to that document. Mr. Brady, do you have anything that, from the staff perspective, that you'd like to share?
Yes, Mayor, I think, I apologize, let me just pull it up. There is a, I think, an equal opportunity in here. We have, as many of you may know, this town of Queen Creek has made the decision to staff up their own police department, which they've been doing several hirings. And, but as part of that, to support them, they've asked us to support them with dispatch services. And so, I don't know if council would be interested in just hearing a little bit about that agreement. That's item 5D on the agenda, or just, we have some representative police departments.
Yeah, I think we'd like to hear more about that.
Just kind of tell you how that's made up and make sure we're covering our cost on that and how that would provide support.
Great. Yes, thank you. I think we certainly want to help the town of Queen Creek, is it? So they've been serviced by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office until now, and, right? Right, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, Mr. Brady. We have a quick PowerPoint, if somebody can find it. As Mr. Brady mentioned, we've been asked by the town of Queen Creek to provide police dispatch services for them. City Mesa Fire already provides dispatch services for their fire department, but they're now standing up their own police department. And they have asked if we could provide dispatch services for the police department as well. That would be on the police side of dispatch as opposed to fire. Right now, this is a five-year proposed agreement, renews annually, January 1st every year, going into effect January 1st of this year. And then, the pricing that's proposed in there would be fixed for the January 1 period, but then it will be revised annually based upon the actual call load and call volume that we see within the town of Queen Creek. The current contract levels are based upon our best estimate in terms of what the service they're currently receiving from the county sheriff's office. So we'll revise, we'll advise them every April and intend to adjust pricing with final pricing due to them in July. The agreement basically covers three areas. It covers the actual dispatch services, the actual radio channels for their officers in the car, as well as we will provide, provide them some limited support in our records section. For example, if they need to enter a stolen vehicle into the national system for that, our records department would do that. Or if they need to confirm a warrant or things in that nature, we'd do that. And then, the police department IT department will provide some limited IT support. We're not going to be supporting their end users directly. They have their own IT department to do that. But for any higher level issues that arise, our IT department would support them in that. So if we look at the year one cost breakdown, there are some one-time costs that they're going to incur, dispatch, the actual hardware, the, the physical consoles that'll go up at the 911 center to sit at, the radio console that they use to dispatch computers, the recording system that records the phones and the screens, and then about a million dollars in personnel costs. And then, in the support services, which is the records and the IT support, that's going to cost about $136,000 a year. And what we're going to do with that is fund seven, or I'm sorry, we're going to fund two record specialists for that to offset the workload on that. And the personnel costs for dispatch, we'll fund a combination of dispatchers, call takers, and a supervisor. And so, the year one total for that is about 1.38 million. And then, if you look at that over the five-year cost, that's our projected five-year cost at this time. And those costs get adjusted annually for our anticipated increases in salary, their anticipated increase in call volume based upon their projected personnel growth, and their anticipated growth in their sworn police force over that period of time as well. Mayor, council, any questions?
I'm sure we do have a few. Obviously, we are, have a very collaborative region, and we like to help particularly in public safety whenever we can, our neighbors. I guess the only question here is, are we making sure that Queen Creek is paying for what they're receiving? For example, if we're, if we're hiring City of Mesa employees, are there then kind of long-term benefit consequences to that, that, are all of those issues being covered here?
The, the personnel costs for that are incorporated into what we're charging the town of Queen Creek. And as I say, each year, we'll adjust that. So if we find there are unanticipated personnel costs, ARS costs, or something like that, then those will be adjusted annually as we go.
Fully loaded, Mayor, as far as those costs. And I'm not worried about any significant uncovered costs later in the future for these personnel. I think on the, it's a lot easier to project and, and cover the lagging costs of pension or health benefits. So I think we have a pretty good handle on those, so.
Great.
And as I think was mentioned, we do this on the fireside. And then, for other communities, remember, we have, not dispatch, but we do the forensic side for some of the communities too. So it's, it's, it helps, one, that we have the larger facilities and the capacity to grow into these areas and that we can provide assistance. And oftentimes, I think not only is it a one-way where we're helping them, but oftentimes, there can be issues across jurisdictional boundaries. And obviously, this helps coordinate those kind of responses and efforts, so.
Great. Questions? Mr. Freeman?
I do. Thank you for your presentation. On the personnel costs, the almost one mil, is that new hires on the seven dispatchers, call takers, supervisor, or are we using existing personnel?
Mayor, council member Freeman, thank you for the question. We are going to be onboarding additional personnel. The way we are going to operate is the Queen Creek dispatch channel will be a dedicated position, so we will staff that as dedicated position. The 911 portion, the call answering portion, will just be added to that existing pool. And you may answer a call one time, and that's for, it's a Mesa call, and so you send it over to the Mesa, appropriate Mesa dispatch channel, or it may be a Queen Creek call, and it'll go over to the Queen Creek dispatcher.
So, yeah, thank you on that. So are we analyzing this on, like, call volumes? And I'm su, I know fire does it based on call volume. I see Assistant Chief Nesbit nodding her head, so. So is that some of the cost, I mean, or charges is based on call volume? And then, you said there are officers as well, the amount of officers, or?
Mayor, council member Freeman, we're, we have a little bit different charging model than we do on the fireside. So on the police department side, they're going to have a dedicated dispatcher, a position all the time. So they'll have a, a one FTE of a dispatcher at all times. So they will always be charged for, I believe it's seven dispatch bodies it takes to fill that. And on the fireside, I believe, we charge on a per-call volume. So this will be on dedicated personnel on their side. The personnel estimates for the 911 side, in terms of how many calls we anticipate answering are based upon their population and the existing call volume with the county sheriff's office.
Well, again, I think, Mr. Brady, like you said, we need to make sure we cover all our costs on this. And so, you're good with that, especially?
Yeah, and I think they have the ability to, as you mentioned, to adjust it. We get to review the actual demand on the, on the system, and we can make adjustments as needed.
Well, obviously, we have a great dispatch regional, you know, center, that call takers, I mean, we're seasoned, our department, city's seasoned very much in this communication. So I think it's just rolling over, maybe other municipalities might be on board, you know, in the future and say, hey, look what Queen Creek's done, working with Mesa, because fire, I think we cover four or five different agencies, and we do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda?
Mayor, could we maybe also have, just, I think it would be helpful for council, there's a lot of activity taking place in southeast Mesa, specifically down Ellsworth Road. There's a significant agreement that we are entering into with, I call it the Mesa Gateway Airport, but it does include Phoenix. And so, we have an agreement with them for some improvements down there. I think it might be helpful to hear, and I think you were on the board, you've already heard this just this week, but I think this agreement and the improvements we're doing at Williams are very critical for some major developments, both on the private sector side, on the east side of Ellsworth, but also as we plan for the future growth of the airport west of Ellsworth, but the east side of the airport. Those may be helpful, Beth.
So, good morning, Mayor and council. Item 6A and 6B on your agenda today are interrelated, and they're also kind of a moment in history as we developed the airport in southeast Mesa. The first item is an IGA with the airport itself to develop some infrastructure on the east side. The second is a contract to do some of the construction. And I'll walk you through it. We've got some opportunities that are kind of bringing this all to the forefront today and starting to move us to the east side. I think we've talked about moving to the east side of the airport for development for a very long time, and it's now becoming a reality. As many of you know, Legacy Sports is under construction under what would normally be the alignment for Williams Field Road just east of Ellsworth. And they're committed to building part of Williams Field Road and expanding Ellsworth. However, to the west of Ellsworth on the airport property, we're starting to see proposed aeronautical uses come in adjacent to Ellsworth. And that's going to trigger some needs to build some additional infrastructure, and that's what these two items are about. This is what's going to be happening in the next six to nine months. As you know, the state Route 24 is under construction. We expect it to complete later in 2022. So there's an opportunity. Legacy will be building all of Williams Field Road to connect Ellsworth to the 24, which you can see just above the Legacy Sports complex. The items on the agenda today bring us into the picture to construct the intersection of Williams Field and Ellsworth, install a signal, and do some work on that intersection. And then, to extend what we're lovingly called the Spine Road to the west in the airport property, about 800 feet to connect to a potential aeronautical user on the west side. We'll also be completing a Spine Road study to complete that. Look at the alignment of the road through the airport all the way up to Hawes. We're going to give them a couple of alignments, because as you all know, development can change things, and roads can move until the development occurs. So we'll give them a couple of different ways to do that alignment. And then, finally, you'll see on the JOC list in the, in the next couple of weeks, a project to extend a 20-inch water line down from state Route 24 to the entrance to the airport is the first phase, and then the second phase will come later to take it all the way to Pecos, so we can get some more water to southeast Mesa. So we've got quite a bit that's going to be going on out in this area in the next six to nine months, and wanted to let you know, because it will be a busy time.
And Mayor and council may also add, where you see on the exhibit in front of you, you see the part of Williams Field coming west of Ellsworth, you see the proposed aeronautical user. But also, the airport currently has, going through a process to select a master developer for the property north of that green line, 300 acres or so, Shay, proposed master developer for that. So they're in the midst of doing those interviews and selections. So you can imagine, then, also, Williams Field will also be very important, or the Spine Road, whatever we're calling it. Shay Boulevard, I think is what we just, is the master plan community, or master plan development, commercial, significant commercial development would be north of that. So this is timely to get, we need to get these improvements in. Legacy is opening up for activities or events in December, January timeframe, and they're, they're booking up lots of events there. And we will hopefully have an announcement of the potential user in November, November, so that'll be a significant announcement for the city also.
You're talking about the aeronautical use?
The aeronautical use on the west side of Ellsworth, but just right there were that, just south of Williams Field.
Oh.
So.
Great. And I note that our former employee, Shay, is in the back. Thank you, Shay, doing a great job on this. And let me just underscore something. Mr. Brady just said there's some exciting announcements on the way for some of the property out here, so really looking forward to that, some of those things happening. And the selection of the developer for the non-aeronautical use along the east side. I think that that'll be very welcome to a lot of the, Mr. Thompson's complaints that he's getting about not having all the business support in this area that some of the residents are looking for. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
So Beth, is this the time allotment for this over here on that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the dates that I'm showing there are completion dates. The dates for the intersection, the Spine Road, the study, all of that are what's captured in item 6A in the IGA. And then, 6B is actually to construct the intersection. We're getting ready to start that, just, if you approve it on Monday, we'll be ready to go.
I don't think there'll be a problem with that, but I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any additional questions on these items?
Mayor, just, oh, are we done with this item? Yeah, I was just, sorry.
I was just going to congratulate Beth on making it up on her own power. Good to see.
No wheels today, Mayor, no wheels.
Good to see that you're doing better.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
I had a question on 5A.
Yes.
Is this a good time? This is about the food vendor.
Right. Oh, sure.
Change. I talked into Assistant Fire Marshal Kevin Bush about it. Maybe he, I had some questions, because it wasn't quite in the notes about, you know, the charges for it. But yet, if the food vendor had a prior inspection from another agency or another municipality, we wouldn't charge for them. Maybe, Mr. Bush, if you could just kind of explain some of the dynamics that put this in play?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor, council members, Mr. Brady. The mobile food ordinance brought a new facet of inspection to the fire prevention division. To arrive at how we were going to do that, we polled our counterpart AHJs in the valley to see what they were doing. There were both some that were charging a fee and others that were not. We then looked at our current model, which we charge for brick-and-mortar fire inspections in the city of Mesa. So to have continuity with that, we arrived on a $50 fee for the mobile food vehicle inspection, which is one-third of a low-risk hazard brick-and-mortar fire inspection in the city of Mesa. We also realized that these mobile food vehicles are transient. They transcend the valley and go into all these different jurisdictions who also require fire inspections. For that reason, we added for the ordinance that if a mobile food preparation vehicle has already had a fire inspection from another authority having jurisdiction within the past 12 months, that one by the Mesa Fire Prevention Division was then not required at all. They just need to provide a copy of that passing inspection to us, and they're fine in Mesa.
I think, I think my question was, you know, I, I value the fire inspection. You know, if we have a food vendor, somebody coming into our city and they need an inspection, or, you know, there was a incident a while back, I think last year, where a food truck blew up, and maybe that was not preventable. However, it was self-built, from what I understand. But, you know, I'm in support of an inspection fee. I just want to let the group know that we do a very thorough job, and if there's, if they already have an inspection they've paid for, then there's no charge to the vendor. But again, the minimal impact is $500. And then, if we pull an inspector off a brick-and-mortar inspection, then there's a cost to that.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions on this item? Mr. Brady, did we not, I mean, we've been criticized in the past for there being a higher bar for food truck licenses and permits than other communities, and I know we've tried to address that. Are we comfortable that we are regulating food trucks in Mesa in a fairly uniform way for surrounding, compared to surrounding?
I think there was a lot of effort to draft up that, that, when we met with council, it's been, what, a couple of months ago, to draft a language that was very consistent with the current state law and be consistent with other cities. So I think we've tried to minimize any perceived, you know, additional burden to be in Mesa. And I think we moved it out of the, was it Peddler, or what, it was in a different category? We had, created its own separate chapter, is that right? Or help me out here.
Sorry. Mayor, council, yes, we, I think Tim can talk about, we streamlined the licensing process to make it easy for people to be able to get their license. And we removed, well, we included a few items that was addressing the license instead of the zoning ordinance, so we can continue to have them operating without meeting any hurdles.
Mayor and council, I think it's going very well. I think we're well-received on moving that, and I think it was beneficial to the food trucks that we did move it out. So I think so far, it's doing what we're expecting it to do.
Okay, good to hear.
Tim, since you're here.
Madam Vice Mayor, I guess, is what I meant to say.
Thank you. Since you're here, how are we notifying the food trucks that they need to have this inspection? Is with, maybe through the licensing, that we can issue some kind of notice so that they're aware?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we notify them. We have a list from our Peddler licenses, so we sent out letters explaining that the new code was coming up and what was expected and about the inspections and so forth, and, and the timeframe to get licensed if they're not already licensed. So, and then, we do go out to the events and educate and get them licensed if they're not already. So right now, we're definitely in the education mode. So we're definitely going out and just trying to make sure everybody understands what needs to be done, and getting them the forms that they need, and, and where to go online to fill out the applications. So, so far, I think it's going real well. We get very few complaints, so.
What is the deadline to have an inspection done?
Well, at the, at the time of, of application to tax and licensing, that's when the vendor is simply asked if they have a recent inspection within the past 12 months. And if not, they are offered the information to contact Mesa Fire Prevention to schedule a fire inspection for their mobile food vehicle.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions on this item or anything else on Monday's agenda?
Mayor, I was just going to mention item, hold on, let me find it again. 10A. We had this discussion last week about utility rates. So this will just provide for the notice, and then we will come back to council before we begin the introduction with the modified, the council has to look at some options to reducing some of the rates, and then, well, at least on the water and wastewater side, and possibly looking at increasing some of the rates, or the fees on the solid waste side. So we're working on those, but we'll, you won't, this will just show the higher level, and then we'll come back, I think it's in November, with the adjusted rates that we'll then be proposing for council's adoption.
Great. And I think Mr. Smith confirmed that we can make adjustments as long as the adjustments are down.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Council, any additional questions on Monday's agenda? All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation on the State of the Court. We're pleased to have with us our presiding city magistrate, Judge Tatts. Judge, welcome. Good, we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Good morning, Mayor, council. Thank you very much for having me and for the invite to talk about what's going on at the court. State of the Court, and the word is strong. We've got great judges, administrators, supervisors, staff. Obviously, we've had some challenges over the past years everyone's had, and we've met them frankly with flying colors. We really feel like the challengers are behind us, and we're going strong. Just to talk about a couple of the highlights, we are recruiting again for a new magistrate, which is always really exciting. The board has always done an exceptional job of bringing you all some candidates to choose, and you've done a great job of choosing from those candidates. You'll get to do that again December or January for someone new. Judge Valerie Boyer Wells left us from a permanent basis after 13 years as a judge. She left very big shoes to fill. We're fortunate that she is coming back as a pro tem to fill in on vacations and sick time for other judges, but we're looking forward to having someone new start with us early next year. Our new court administrator did an employee satisfaction survey at the court beyond what the city does as well, and it showed that, that people are really happy. One of my biggest goals in taking over last year, morale was good, I wanted to make it better. There's always room for improvement. And one of the stats I pulled out of that is 78% of the court employees felt like morale had significantly improved over the last six months. And when you consider the leadership changes and the fact that we did tighten up some policies, I don't think it was just bringing free donuts every Tuesday. I think that there really was some good things happening. We've empowered them. We've taken their input, we've considered their suggestions, we've done the things they've asked us to do. So it's, it's been a real good thing. When I put this stat in, I thought about it without perspective, it's kind of tough to say, but, but we've done 19 jury trials to verdict since we started doing jury trials again in April. I think that's more than we've done in a year since I've been a judge. We've really gotten through our backlog. Not only have we been doing the jury trials to verdict, but that's caused many of the other cases that were in a backlog over the year to resolve, to the point that we're back where we were before, and I'll show some stats on that in a couple minutes. Veterans Court's going strong. I don't have any statistics on that. We're in the process of compiling those right now, but Judge Rick Romley, who presides over that, talked to me on Tuesday, and he thinks recidivism is going to show that it's less than 10%. He's just not seeing the people come back. When they get the resources in Veterans Court, they graduate from that program, they take advantage. They're not coming back. They're not committing new crimes, and that's exactly the goal. And I'm really looking forward to getting the stats to actually show that. Our Rule 11, our competency court, once we brought that from Superior Court and started doing it in-house, we're resolving the competency issue in less than 60 days. In Superior Court, that used to take up to six months. So again, we're really serving the people and making things better along those lines. Finally, one of the things we did is through a security grant, we've had a couple of security assessments at the new building that was built in 2010, and both assessments said we need to tint the windows. And so, our new court administrator got a grant from the Office of Administration of the Courts, a security grant to fund the tinning of the windows. So it's not going to cost the citizens of Mesa a dime, but it's going to save them money in utility costs. We'll be doing our part for the city's climate action plan. When I came before you last year, I had this chart. I'm not going to bore you with a bunch of numbers today, but I just kind of wanted you to show, to show you the difference in filings, 2019 to 2020, how much they were down and how much they've come back in 2021. As you can see from August, we've actually had more filings in 2021 than we did in 2019. So we're back to full speed ahead. And just to show that it's not just filings, it's cases resolved, the bottom line on this DUI cases that are resolved is from 2020, last year, obviously that was down. Again, 2021, we're back up to 2019 levels. Couple of the new things that we're doing. I told you when I came before you last year that, you know, we needed to get through the challenges of last year, and we'll start doing some new stuff when we come out the other side, and that's what we're doing. Two things with customer service we've started doing, one is a chatbot. So you've probably done that, you've gone online and you see the little thing, do you want to chat with somebody, a little icon or something on the website? And that's what this is. And our customer service people have come up with well over 100 questions, it might be several hundred at this point, frequently asked questions to anticipate what people might have when they go on the website and have a question. So they don't have to wait for a customer service agent, they don't have to wait for a response to an email, they can get real-time answers from the chatbot, frees up our customer service people, improves our citizen interaction, and obviously improves our customer service. We're also working on putting a payment kiosk outside, so people can make cash payments after hours and weekends. Again, they don't have to try to take time off work to come in during their regular hours. We'll give them a way to do that. We're hoping to have that done sometime early next year as well. I know the council's always been very supportive of our specialty courts, so I want to take a few minutes to talk about those. Community court is strong. People are coming back, we're helping people, just like Veterans Court. Our graduations from community court have shown a success where it's not on here, but we've only had two of our graduates pick up new cases in the past year. And that's really remarkable when you consider the participants we're helping. We're helping people that generally have a lot of cases, that have a lot of history of picking up cases. So when we graduate, we're confident that they're not going to come back. Obviously, you're never going to have 100% reduction in recidivism, but the numbers have shown that the program is absolutely a success for the people who do take advantage of it and the people who are getting the services that we're navigating them to. Again, if you just look at the numbers, these are new people or cases in the court. We've had almost as many in the first seven months of 2021 as we had in all of 2020. And our graduates, again, those success stories, we've had double the number in this past seven months that we had over last year, double the number of cases. And again, those are the people that we, as a team, feel confident that we're not going to see back with new cases. Community court's always up for expansion. We are hoping to serve as many of the homeless people as we can in the city. Our navigators, we have seven navigators that come to every single court session on Monday and Wednesday afternoon. I know Council Member Spillsbury's coming in a couple of weeks to visit. Open invitation to anyone. I know many of you have already come, and you're welcome to come anytime. We'd love you to come over and see what we're doing. One of the expansions we did is we separated out a docket for those who have been designated as seriously mentally ill. We've added two additional dockets, so every, basically two Thursdays a month that we're doing this in the afternoon. And I want to make sure everybody understands, we don't decide who we think is, has mental health issues or not. This is a designation that comes from the state of Arizona, and once somebody's been designated after an evaluation as being SMI or seriously mentally ill, it opens up some doors for them. some doors for them. They're assigned to a clinic. They're assigned to a specific case manager from that clinic. And on this docket, rather than using our Community Court navigators to work with them, we work directly with their case managers. So their case managers come to court either virtually or in person. They work with us for a game plan for the participants in between the court dates to kind of work with them to make sure they're connecting with the clinic, taking advantage of those services, and again, hopefully reducing the recidivism. One of the things that we've talked to you about before, and we've actually now finally started taking steps towards implementing, is a domestic violence court. Myself, several members of the city prosecutor's office, the city public defender, one of my administrators, one of my supervisors, we all went to a training that I helped coordinate with the city of Gilbert back in September over there from the Tucson Domestic Violence Court team. They came up for a morning, talked to us about their program. They're a mentor court in the country. They've been doing this since, I want to say 2014 at least, but they brought their public defenders, their prosecutors, their community advocates, victim advocates, treatment plan people, their judge. Everybody came up and really gave us a roadmap as to how you can get one of these courts going. They gave us forms. They gave us a handbook. It was just a really helpful training, and we're starting off with a kickoff meeting October 12th, again with the prosecutor's office, the public defender, the treatment people that we work with, and we hope to have that again going again early 2022. So that is just some of the highlights of what we're doing over at the court. I wanted to keep the presentation brief. I know that you invited me here and had some questions. If you still do, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you very much. Great report, Judge. Counsel, you have questions for Judge Tatts? Ms. Duff?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm, all great news. On the Community Court, we're seeing more success with that. And I would just wanted to have some insight as to why is it more successful? Is it because, you know, the city has been, had federal dollars that we've been able to use towards homelessness and, you know, programming has been robust this past year. I don't know if that's been it, but I'd love to see it grow in whatever is working. I'd like to see some more support.
Vice Mayor Duff, Mayor, thank you for the question. Absolutely, that was a huge help. Our biggest challenge, and I've been the judge over it since shortly after it implemented in 2018, our biggest challenge was always housing. We had the people, we had the desire, we had the navigators to help, but there wasn't the inventory. The demand exceeded the inventory, and the federal dollars that came in and opened a couple of hotels that the police bought, were able to put people, or lease, were able to put people in there. And just having that roof over their head allowed them to eliminate some of those challenges they had out on the streets and enabled them to focus on the services and get the help. And it wasn't just putting them in a hotel and leaving them alone. Obviously, the police program gave them wraparound services, worked with community bridges to make sure that they were following the rules while they were there, but also taking advantage of the services. And I think just having, not having to worry about where you're sleeping tonight, where you're having to get food, and just knowing that you had a place to go to, I think really increased the success of people. Some of our biggest success stories over the last year and a half were definitely people that were housed in that hotel shelter program. And I look forward to hopefully even more money infusing more housing opportunities, because we still have that. We still have people in our court who are doing everything we ask them to do. The only thing they can't do is get a roof over their head because they don't have a voucher yet, or they don't have a place for their limited income where they can afford to get it. So obviously, those are community issues that I know you all are working towards resolving, and once that increases, our success is even going to increase more.
That's wonderful. And I know going forward in our federal dollars or our new round, we're looking at solutions to those housing, but I do appreciate that having the housing first has been the point for more success of allowing people to, you know, be housed and leave a productive and happy life, you know, instead of being on the streets, which is very rough. So appreciate that, and I look forward to the work that we're going to do to even have that excel more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions for Judge Tatts? I have one or two, Judge. Obviously, excited about the idea of expanding the specialty courts into the domestic violence area or other areas that you think might, you know, be useful to us. It seems like back when we launched Community Court, we, the name Community Court is a good name, right? Because there's no stigma attached it really to being assigned to a community court. And we debated, well, should this be Mental Health Court? Should it be, you know, what's the right way to describe what's going on here? And I just wondered, domestic violence court, I'm sure it's needed, but is there, will some people cringe at the idea of being assigned to or participating in domestic violent court because they think that that attaches some sort of stigma? Is it the right, is it the right message to, just help me understand, it sounds like it's being successful in Tucson, so I suspect that my, you know, the answer to my question is no, it's fine, but is that a challenge?
Well, Mayor, Council, I think that's a great point, and obviously, I'd heard that. And so when we have our meeting that's on the agenda to see if there are some alternatives to maybe naming it something different. I would point out it's different than Community Court or Veterans Court in terms of it's more of an accountability court. Domestic Violence Court really is focused on just making sure that the people who have committed these acts of domestic violence not only get the help that they need, but we make sure that they're doing it in a timely fashion. Under our current model, if somebody either pleads guilty or gets convicted of some sort of intimate violent crime, they're sent to counseling. But if they're not going to the counseling, we have to wait for the counseling service to let the prosecutor's office know, and then the prosecutor's office to file a petition to revoke, and then the court to issue a summons. And we're several months down the road before we have them back before us to find out why they're not doing that counseling that obviously we've determined they need to avoid, you know, interrupt the cycle of violence. It's very clear from the research, in domestic violence situations, if you don't intervene under the cycle, it's going to get worse. This is designed to get them before us. We bring them back every couple of weeks in the beginning, just to make sure they're getting signed up, just to make sure they're going. So while we certainly want it to be something that is helping both victims and offenders, and certainly we want it to be something that we're not stigmatizing the people, that they're coming and they want to come and they want to take advantage of, it is a little bit different model than some of the other courts that we have.
Well, and again, I couldn't be more pleased with the Community Court. I know there are literally other cities around the valley that are coming to us and asking how we did it. And Goodyear, I think, just adopted a Community Court, you know, at their last council meeting. So so the specialty courts are obviously very successful, and you're doing a great job. Tell me a little bit more about the SMI situation. I mean, if we have some chronic reoffenders, and that's the reason for that appears to be their, you know, an SMI diagnosis, what are the resources? I mean, like you say, we lack the resources to house people. Do we lack the resources to adequately respond to the SMI population, homeless, SMI population?
Actually, the resources are greater for that population, and that's kind of why we separated it out. We always, since 2018 in Community Court, worked with the case managers in the clinics when we identified someone in our Community Court that was actually designated SMI and had those resources available. We worked with them directly, but it created kind of an issue within the court. You're, almost had two different things going on. You have the people in Community Court that weren't designated SMI, that we were assigning a navigator, that our navigators were reporting back to us, and then you have the separate population that was designated SMI, had the case managers, had the clinics, that Mercy Care oversees. Mercy Care's always been part of our Community Court, so it just made sense to kind of separate that out. They do have actually more resources. They can get housing faster. They can get vouchers faster. They have the clinics they can go to at any time for, they'll give them bus passes, they'll get them transportation. They obviously make sure that they're seeing the appropriate doctors, getting the appropriate medication. So they have a built-in support system. Once they've received that designation from the state of Arizona, we're just looking to take advantage of that. We're just looking as a court to give them the incentive to say, look, you know, you've picked up a couple cases here. If you connect with your clinic, if you do the things we ask you to do, you can end up getting those cases dismissed. So again, it's been a very successful model, and it had some hiccups at first, but that court is running as efficiently as the other Community Court. We started it in January, and I'm just really proud of the people that are in there. We've just had a really good success out of there as well.
That's encouraging to hear, because I think we've all seen recently examples in the homeless population of folks that appear to be paranoid, schizophrenic, I mean, that obviously have some mental health issues. And to know that there are some, there's additional layers of support and that we ought to be very proactive in reaching out to those folks because there's some resources to help them get out of that situation, that's encouraging to hear. Thank you. Counsel, other questions for Judge Tatts? All right, Judge Tatts, we're proud of you, proud of your court. Thank you. Please communicate our congratulations on having a great court back to your staff and your judges. We'll look forward to working on getting that empty seat filled for you. I know, I assume the advisory board is working on processing that right now, and we'll look forward to interviewing those folks when the time is right.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. I will do.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda for this meeting is to acknowledge minutes from various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences attended. Who would like to go first? I know we've been, had a busy week. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, yesterday, we did a, between economic development and Mesa Chamber of Commerce, did the annual tour of District 6. So that was half the day. And then you and I and Manager Brady and Scott Butler met with our counterparts from Apache Junction for lunch, and we had a great conversation about regional development between our communities. It was a good discussion.
Both great events. There's big things on the horizon at Apache Junction. It's an exciting time for that community. Okay, Counsel, who's next? Julie?
So I had to leave early last Thursday, so is it okay if I go back last week to a few things as well?
We have to say birthday?
Yeah, we want to take it back to birthday week.
You know, we had a cake waiting for you when you...
I know, I got it. Thank you so much. I felt really bad that I could have been surprised and I wasn't. So I have a few things, sorry.
Please.
So last Wednesday was National Fall Prevention Day, and so I met the Mesa Fire Department over at the orchards in my district where they installed grab bars, in many cases, additional grab bars for the residents there. And the grab bars are to help empower these residents so that they can stay longer in their homes. 50 grab bars that were donated by Home Depot were installed, and it was really neat to be there and chat with the residents and watch some of those installations happen. So thank you to the Mesa Fire Department for putting the event on and for Home Depot and the East Valley Disaster Services for helping to install the bars. I also attended the ribbon cutting for Luminati's, and I think you mentioned this, but it's their first location in Mesa, their fifth in the valley. Really good pizza. I love their salads, so go check them out at Dana Park. Then last Thursday, I got to tour Copa Health and see the really neat things going on over there. And I also participated in a meeting with Mayor Giles and other community leaders to discuss ways that we can prevent teen suicide and assist the kids struggling with mental illness. And that was a really neat meeting, talking about this important issue in our community. And I look forward to future discussions and coming up with ways to help with that. And Saturday, the I Love Mesa Day was fabulous. We spent several hours out there visiting downtown businesses, and it was just so fun. So many people were there, and really great things are happening, and I think everyone enjoyed it. I especially loved the Young the Giant concert, where they surprised me with, by wishing me happy birthday. That was super fun. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. On Monday, I toured Foster 360 in Phoenix, and this is a nonprofit whose mission is to break the cycle of homelessness, specifically for youth who have aged out of foster care, providing them with holistic services and empowering them with the necessary tools, education, and a mindset to succeed in life. And that was really neat to go and see what's going on there, and I would love to see something like that in Mesa. So it was really neat. Tuesday night, I attended a neighborhood meeting put on by our Neighborhood Services with Vice Mayor Duff, and this meeting provided information to our residents on different city services, walked them through how to use the Mesa Now app. It was a really great turnout and a fun meeting. And then yesterday, Vice Mayor Duff and Councilmember Freeman and I stopped by the bus yards and dropped off donuts to all of our bus drivers and Mesa Public Schools. We wanted to just thank them and show our appreciation, especially, I wanted to thank them for the, they worked all day long getting kids back and forth from Mesa Height and Mountview during the bomb threat day. So that's kind of what prompted that, but we appreciate all that they're doing. And I'm done. That's it.
Thank you. Jen Duff?
I think she covered everything that's happening in Mesa in the last two weeks, but I'll add on a couple more. And I do want to say a shout out for the I Love Mesa Day to all the residents and the downtown businesses and the concerts that were there. Really felt like the good old times where a community could gather and still be safe, but just feel that energy of being together again and celebrating all the things that are good in our lives. So also, over the weekend, I attended the Adelante Exoto. It's the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Awards, and I want to recognize that Nicole Leba was recognized as a, for community leadership for her, we run Mesa program, that she runs out of the Eagles Community Center as a youth running program, and want to congratulate her and thank her for all her work as well. I know Mesa PD supports that program, and I'm so happy for her and the entire team that the program was recognized. On Tuesday, I attended a Mesa Chamber Women's Business Connection, and the speaker was a woman who started Kids in the Corner, and the mission is to shatter the stigma that surrounds mental illness and support the kid in the corner, whoever that may be, to really reach out to people, especially teens, as they navigate a difficult time in their life, and reach out to them and see them and talk to them and know that they're there and cared about, and so that we all take that commitment to seek out those who may be in the corners and worried about life. So that was a very strong, and I think that's about it. I think you got everything else. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
I just wanted to point out that tomorrow night, if you want to get to a basketball game, our Mesa Police Department's playing the MCC alumni over at MCC campus. I think that's still on. I see a nod in the head. So if you want to take your family out and see a basketball game, I wonder how PD has done. Have they, they win or lose? They're pretty good, okay. All right, so take your family out and have a good game. Thanks.
Sounds like a torn ACL waiting to happen. That's right. Vice Mayor?
Looking forward, I want to add that in downtown on this Saturday from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., it's Coffee with a Cop? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Is that Organic Bean Company at 40 North McDonald? That'll be lots of fun. So please come out if you're in downtown. I see that it's also going on in East Mesa Knuckle Sandwiches on 1140 North Higley Road. So come out and enjoy a cup of coffee with your local Mesa Police Officers. And I believe the Culture Coalition has a, an event at Riverview Park on Saturday evening? Okay. I think it is from 4:00 on. I'll double check that, but that could be a wonderful Saturday evening. And Jared's Coffee in downtown Mesa, if you're coming with the, for the coffee, make sure to stop by at 11:00 a.m. They're doing the ribbon cutting for the brisket sandwiches they now have, and so that'll be fun. Thank you.
Wait a minute, they're having brisket sandwiches at Jared's Coffee Shop?
Yeah, I was in there a couple Saturdays ago, and they were making the brisket. And I usually don't eat meat, but like, I was convinced it smelled so good, and the sandwich was very good. Yeah.
That's a ribbon cutting I could... All right.
Brisket with a cop.
There you go. We got, yeah, we can work on the messaging of that a little better, but... Well, thank you. I'll be at the Coffee with a Cop events on Saturday, so thanks for mentioning that. And let me just add my congratulations to, city staff worked real hard on the I Love Mesa Day, and I thought it was just a huge success. And there were a lot of service projects also going on around the city that day. And I appreciate the mayor's youth committee was, did a service project that morning out at the United Food Bank that was a lot of fun, but also very successful. And I was just struck by, they've got a great model out there that they have at Lena Warehouse for, for doing group service projects. And it's just, I don't know that they get credit for doing service, because I think everybody there had a really good time, but it was, I hope all the youth groups and church groups in town are taking full advantage of that. We've heard about domestic violence this morning, and appropriately so. Yesterday, as Chairman of MAG, I was at a press conference at the state Capitol talking about Domestic Violence Month and the emphasis on senior abuse that MAG is placing on this year's events. So there is a lot, just a horrifying amount of domestic violence. So there is a lot, just a horrifying amount of domestic violence that occurs among our seniors. So I think it's important that we raise awareness on that and appreciate all, everyone in our community who's working on that. Also, I appreciate, Julie mentioned that we also issued a proclamation on suicide prevention and had an event this past week to talk about the importance of that issue as well. So thanks for all the good work in our community that people are engaged in on those two important issues. Anything else you'd like to address under this agenda item, counsel? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we'll be meeting on Monday, October 4th, and Mr. Palmbe will be here. I'll be out of town, so enjoy.